So we're gonna start, we have a quorum present. And it is a special meeting, so a little different than what we do with our regular meetings. We're not gonna have any public testimony or any of those comments. So we'll just jump right into the business. So the first item on the agenda is a call to order. We do have a quorum present. And approval of the agenda item is the next action item.
I move that we approve the agenda.
All second.
There's been motion and second, all in favor.
Aye.
We have one action item, and that is potential lease of Union High School to Pi STEM Academy. Dr. Estelle, if you don't mind, I'll just have Mr. Stoffer come up.
All right. Chair Kirkman, Board of Trustees, as we've talked about the last few weeks, we've had an opportunity to engage in some conversations regarding the potential lease of the current or the old Union Building to the Pi STEM Academy. Per board direction, we went back and started to work on some framework language for a potential lease, if that's where the board would like to go. Again, in the memo that you have, the basic structure were outlined. We did make a recommendation, we have some recommendations that are built into that memo as well. The parts I'd like to point out for the board to consider is, one, if the board does wish to have the district engage in the leasing agreement with the Pi STEM Academy, it is our recommendation that if that is the case, that we would look at the lower end lease amount with the least amount of maintenance that the district would be supplying, if that so is what the board desires. The reason for that, again, is just the complication of, for us, of just matching it up, and how do we do that? And then also, two, is we wanted to minimize some of the out-of-pocket expenses for the district. The next component to bring your attention to as part of the memo, one of our concerns in relationship to the lease potential is that there is a potential loss as if Pi students or Pi STEM does open up with inside the Nampa School District, there's a possibility of up to 170 students that could be lost from the Nampa School District, which generates for the, currently for the Nampa School District approximately $1.6 million. Now, the lease would bring some of that money back for the district, but that is somewhere about $300,000 with the lower-end lease per year, up to about $540,000 in the higher-end lease, if that's where the board directed. So overall, there would be a loss in revenue, a potential loss in revenue for the district. That is just something we'd like the board to consider through their thoughts on this lease option we have. And from there, more willing to answer some.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
The 170 students, is that in addition to the potential reduction in population of 250 or so that we might be looking at next year? Is that in addition to, or is that?
So the way that we assume that number is that that's the current enrollment of Pi STEM Academy was in that 200 variable, and they don't, and as they stated before, they want to stay under that 429 capacity. So we just use the difference between their current enrollment up to that 429. Again, that's approximation number.
So are we potentially looking at 400?
It could be up to 429 students.
So point of, yeah, so point of clarification, it's in addition to.
Correct.
Okay.
That's all I had, thanks.
Good. And so we put two possible actions for the board to consider to direct the district. One would be approve the, approve the district of Pi STEM to enter to the agreement in principle, and then direct the district administration to finalize the three-year lease. That was something that we did work through in our initial negotiations, or to decline the Pi STEM lease option. So those are the two potential action items that we have provided the board.
Okay, trustees, any questions?
Yeah, just to confirm, we do have other interested parties at this time. We just are not obviously addressing it this evening, but.
Chair Kirkman, Trustee Jennings, yes, the answer to that is we do have some other interested parties that are still in the, we do have, for the next board meeting, I do have one offer that is solidified. And then we do have another one that is in the process of putting together their package. Excuse me, two additional, I need to apologize, just two additional that are putting together packages. One solidified, two more packages.
Mr. Stoffer, we did give you the authority to speak numbers and talk about these other leases, correct? So you have some soft numbers on these other leases?
Yeah, Chair Kirkman, Trustee Taylor, the other options are more towards the land swap options that we've talked about prior, and so that's what I'm waiting to see. We do have one offer that is a monetary offer as well that we have in hand. But those, again, are currently, we have no other entities that have been willing to lease.
But any idea if those put us more towards the black than the red, right? When we're talking about Pi STEM, we're talking about losing more than gaining. Do we know if these other options give us more of that black space than red?
Chair Kirkman, Trustee Taylor, thank you for the question. The answer to that is that they seem more in line with keeping us to the value of the property and not having this component of potentially losing revenue. Because again, if we look at this from the standpoint, this is not just a one-time transaction. That would be $1.6 million per year, not just a one-time cost.
Trustees, any other further questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stoffer.
Thank you.
All right, trustees.
I hear that you'll entertain a motion.
I will entertain whatever you want to give me.
Well, I'll go. Obviously, in essence, with this property, it's concerning with a potential net loss for me. So in this case, I move that we decline the Pi STEM lease option.
Hey, there's a motion and a second on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. The decline in the Pi STEM lease option passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Zone Three trustee candidate interviews. So Ms. Lamont, I'm gonna turn to you and let, if you want to just kind of explain how this, I mean, I could explain it, but I'm probably gonna leave a few holes in there, so.
So we have the four candidates sitting right here.
And then you.
They will, I think at the beginning, we will have all of them introduce themselves, a brief introduction, and then in your guys', in front of you, you'll have the agenda. And if you turn the page, it is the questions for this evening that you guys sent in. So I printed them all out. Tyler has been ever so kind to have them ready to project. And so however you want to start asking, whichever number you want to start asking the first question, we will have each candidate, round robin, starting, I hate Carla, I'm gonna pick on you, you're right next to me, we'll start with Carla. And so question one, it'll go Carla, Ed, Ron, and then Allison. Question two will go Ed, Ron, Allison, Carla. Question three, Ron, I think you guys are getting it, everyone's.
I'm gonna keep that straight for us.
I'm on it, I am ready. You know I like to keep us in line, so I will make sure I do that. And then after that, you guys will have a chance to deliberate, discuss. But I also included a ballot, if you would like to choose, select one out of the four and sign it, and then I can gather them, and then we can appoint when it comes to that.
And don't worry, you'll have plenty of time. We're not gonna put the three-minute clock up here for you guys to answer a question. So please, you know, take the time that you need. This is your opportunity to tell us and the public why you wanna, why you wanna, why you wanna be a trustee. And we'll start, we can just start. Trustee Benz, are you okay if you want to start us off? And we'll just start with question one, and just go down the. Yeah, before we start, absolutely. So let's just start over here with, what is your last name, Carla? Baron, let's start with Ms. Baron and have her come up and.
And so that's very clear, we're gonna have each of you take your time at the podium so that everyone can hear you clearly that you're watching the video.
My, how close, okay, close, okay.
You're killing it.
Okay, my name is Carla Barrens. I am a community, I've been in the community for about four years. When I saw the post, I actually went out to the website to look up some dates and saw the posting for the trustee position, and it just intrigued me. We were a longstanding family, like I said, in the community. Our, both of our boys have gone through the public school system here in Nampa. I've seen a lot of change over the, oh gosh, my first one graduated in 99. So, you know, volumes, you know, the changes, the, you know, the school's increasing, and then, and then losing some schools, the schedule changing. And so I just feel like I could be an asset to this board with just my, you know, I'm very involved in the community, and I just, you know, I, I'm in favor of public education, and I, you know, strongly agree with, you know, what you guys do and what we're doing here in Nampa. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Atienza.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Ed Atienza. I'm a senior sales manager at Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories. I'm also a vice chair of the advisory board for the Idaho STEM Action Center, and I've lived in Zone Three for the last nine years, almost 10 years now. I was neighbor of outgoing trustee Jason Sue's, Jason Sue. And I'm currently also on the elementary math curriculum committee for the Napa School District. And following application to that committee, the trustee Sue had actually encouraged me to apply. And then while I was on the committee, some of the staff on the Napa School District also encouraged me to, to apply. So honestly, I'm scared for this position. I recognize that after going through some of the videos, looking at the minutes, that there's a lot of time associated with being on the board, especially getting out to the schools, doing the school visits, being here at the public meetings, and then being in the executive session. So appreciate all of your time working on the board and happy to serve if appointed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Swank.
Good evening, Ron Swank. I, I do live here in the community, I've been here for 16 years. I'm a Nampa High School graduate. I moved back to the area in 90, sorry, it would have been 2007. And I worked for the Napa School District. I did serve and work at the New Horizons Elementary and Ridge Line High School, and spent some years at Union as well. I do have a couple of kids still in the Napa School District, and I'm very passionate about education, particularly public education. Like I'd said, I am a little nervous about this, you know, it's something new. I am self-employed, I am the CEO of my business, I'm the only employee right now. But I do have the time, and like I said, I am very passionate about the education, both as an educator and as a parent as well, and also for, for students. I had a great opportunity to sit with a lot of students and make a difference and have an impact on them. I'm definitely looking forward to learn more about what this entails and how I can become involved, and if it's something I can do and serve the community, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Allison Westphal.
Good evening, trustees. My name's Allison Westphal, and I joined the Napa School District in the second grade some time ago. I'm a proud Napa grad, too, go Bulldogs, and my kiddo is a Napa grad as well. I previously, I worked in the district for 11 years as a communication director, left to serve the state, and I work in a neighboring district in Kuna. I know there's been considerable turnover on the Zone Three position, so this would be the third trustee in three years. I thought I could bring some experience, as previously been a trustee. But you have some wonderful, you have some wonderful candidates, so I'm sure all of, all of us would be fine representatives for our zone. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chair Kirkman.
Trustee Taylor.
Yeah, before we get started, I, I just want to say how thankful I was. We did get some really great candidates, and when we put that out there, we have had turnover in this zone. And so there's always a little bit of fear that we won't get anybody right, or that the pendulum will swing and we'll get, you know, people who maybe aren't really truly interested in the position, or maybe would have ulterior motives. And I just really feel like we got four great candidates who are all really here because they are passionate about public education. So I just really am thankful for all four of you applying.
Yeah, I'm glad the vacancy in Zone Three didn't scare you away.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not cursed or anything. Okay, well, let's start with Ms. Behrens, right?
Yeah.
And if you want to come up to the podium, we'll do all the question and answer at the podium, and we'll start with trustee Benz.
I'm excited that you have applied to be part of this board. And so with that, what do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities?
So I feel like the board, we want to be able to advise, assist, and partner with our school district officials. I think we, we should be able to help them maybe set goals for our school district, help with written policies, I mean, I, you know, I, I'm assuming that that's part of it as well. We need to be avid listeners to our community, which includes our teachers, our students, our parents. You know, in the end, it's, you know, it's not about us individually, it's us collaborating together and doing what's best for our school district and our community and those that are, you know, that's my, that's my end goal would be to, to make it a, you know, continue to make it a good, good school district to live in and attend, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask you, do you have sufficient time? Oh, I'm sorry.
I should say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So each candidate answers the same question.
Yeah, I know, I was just hoping that we wouldn't do the frog hopping down, up and down, up and down. That's fine, all right. That's okay, if you can have a seat, I'll ask.
That way each person gets opportunity to be first.
You get the, you get the question, you get the same question, go ahead and come up to the podium. She keeps us, she keeps us in line, yeah.
So, thank you for applying, and the same question for you. So what do you see as the board's role and responsibility?
So I feel the board's role is, is a reflection of the community and influence on budgets and policy. Also, the board's also responsible for executing community desires and executive sessions also in terms of hiring and, or disciplinary action in the executive sessions. And that, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swank, thank you for applying, and same question goes for you. So what do you see as the board's role?
My view is, the role of the board is to listen to the community, listen to the parents, educators, and ultimately make decisions that will impact, that have a greater impact on the students. That's the priority, right? It is the youth, the children of our, of our community. And to weigh in all the options, all the different things that get presented, and I think making the best decisions that will benefit our students, however it might impact them. It's whether it's through educators, through policies, or what it may be. But that's ultimately, that is the, the goal is for the children, the youth, the students of our community, to help them be successful and, and ultimately be contributing members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Westphal, same question for you. What do you see as the board's role and responsibilities?
Yeah, I see the board as a part of a two-part team, the board and the superintendent. And we have a mission and a vision that set high expectations for the kids in our community about achieving high levels of learning and then everyday experiences that are amazing. There are all the legal things that we have to do. There are all the legal things that we have to do, and then, and our role as the board, we're bringing forward community values, opinions, feedback to aid our superintendent and his team as we work together.
Thank you.
Thanks. Can I go now? Okay. Ed, I think you're up. Did I do it right? All right, good. As you can see, we don't take ourselves very seriously. Pretty relaxed. All right. Question number two, do you have sufficient time and energy to devote to this position?
I'm, I'm fortunate in my sales manager role that what I do isn't super critical. Well, it is critical, but from a, from a timing.
This is a public meeting and it's recorded.
From a timing perspective.
It's not time sensitive.
It's not, not at that time sensitive. So in the, in the sales management role, it takes up my time from about 7:00 AM until about 6:00 PM. And then after that, generally, my customers don't want to meet unless it's an emergency. So I have about a 50% travel involved in my, my current day job. And so that leaves me a lot of time in the evenings to, well, a little bit of time taking care of my family and a little bit of time reviewing board packets and doing my own personal research and attending regular board meetings. So I have experience participating in other boards such as advisory boards, the Maction Center, and then the, the curriculum committee here. And so I've been able to schedule time to make the regular board meetings for those committees, and I feel I should be able to do that here, at least for the regular board meetings. Special, special meetings such as this one might be a little more difficult if I've already have pre-planned travel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Swank?
I only have two children at home. They're both in high school right now, and I create my own schedule. I, I do a little traveling for business, but my schedule's pretty, pretty open. I do enjoy going fishing, so, but I can work around that. Thank you.
Well, that, that addresses the time. What about the energy?
Oh, I got the energy. I'm not 50 yet.
All right, thank you. That's a good one.
Now I know, we're waiting till 50.
All right, Allison?
Yes, on time and energy, even though I'm past 50. My, my day job meets, they also meet in evenings, but it's not a conflict, it's a different schedule, so, yeah.
Now I can answer your question. I thought you were, I thought that was just kind of a question you were answering, asking me to tell him that one.
We all did.
Yeah, so I'm a very committed person. Once I commit to something, I'm all in. I do work Monday through Friday. I work for White Peterson Law Firm. They are aware that I have applied for this potential trustee position. They're very excited, you know, they, they support me 100%, even though I, I'm the office manager there. And even though things happen all day, every day, I mean, I can, you know, work my schedule around, if there's anything during the day that needs to happen. I just work my schedule around that. My evenings are open. I am an empty nester, so my kids are both graduated. I've got grandkids and, you know, we just can definitely work around all of that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, come on up, Mr. Swank, and trustee Taylor West, the next question.
Good evening. Do board members or the board have a role in the day-to-day operations of the district?
Hello, that's a good question. I don't know for sure. I would say, I mean, definitely the board is involved. But I think ultimately, I think, you know, having worked in the district, the person I saw more involved, of course, would be the superintendent, in this case Greg Russell. But I would, not having been in that role and not seeing it, I, I think they would be involved on a day-to-day basis. That would be the best of my understanding with that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Allison.
Good evening.
Same question. Do board members or the board have a role in the day-to-day operations of the district?
From my perspective, it's why you hire a superintendent, and he has a team, and he reports back to you those things that may happen day-to-day that need to come to the board for action. But we all have jobs already, and we serve on the board, and that's why we hire our superintendent.
Thank you.
I know that round robin. All right, big question. Do board members or the board have a role in the day-to-day operation of the district?
So I'm with Ron. I don't, that's a good question. I don't know for sure, but I would assume that you've got to have some sort of, I mean, even if it's just listening, you know, being a, in your networking while you're at your own job, you listen and you, I mean, we're listeners, and we bring that back to the, the board as a whole. I mean, whether I, whether you did something Monday through Friday at 5:00, I think you need to be available, you know, if something comes up. But, you know, I think the, the board sets the superintendent, the school district, and the principals, and all of our educators up to be able to do their day-to-day duties.
All right. No surprise here. Here is your question. Do board members or the board have a role in the day-to-day operation of the district?
Absolutely. And, and the way I see it is all the decisions that we make, any, any policy that we write have immediate and enormous impacts to the day-to-day operations. But in terms of what happens during the day-to-day operations, I think the board needs to be aware of what's happening. But the decisions or the action that we take is going to be at the board meetings or the, the executive board meetings.
Thank you.
Ms. Westfall? Good evening. Question. What are the current challenges facing education and as well as the school board?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, trustee Jennings, can we maybe narrow this down specifically to Napa, or do you want to just ask it in a general?
No, I love that.
Okay.
Yeah, to the Napa District itself.
Yeah. We heard a little bit of it tonight, losing students, and then how do you maintain a system to reach this mission and vision that we have of, of high levels of learning for all kids while resources are shrinking? How do you best manage your resources in the face of that? So how do you attract great teachers or the methods that you've done already, doing what you wanted them to do? And the board, you've had change. So I heard your clerk share that there was going to be onboarding and training for the, the new person, a great plan. But that resources issue, maintaining a system that can meet the needs of all kids, is what I've been seeing.
Thank you. I think we got the rotation down. This is good.
I wasn't waiting for you.
Ms. Behrens, same question for you. And again, we're gonna put it in regards to the district itself. What are the current challenges facing education and the school?
So the one thing that, that, that I see is, is that has come up, it's come a lot to, to several, to several cities across, I guess, the state, are the cell phones that are, that are in, you know, the policies that they're trying to do with the cell phones and how that's affecting education and the learning that's happening within the schools. And, and trying to create policies that work for those districts. So that's what, you know, I know that Napa hasn't, hasn't really specifically set a, a policy yet. To my knowledge. I know that there's some, you know, some guidelines within the school districts, but within the schools posted, but I just feel like that that, you know, that would help our education if, if, you know, a, a, a policy, a stricter policy was probably in place would be my, would my, I, I think it would help education, you know, their learning and, and keep them more focused.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Atienza? Same question for you. What are the current challenges facing Napa School District's education and the board?
I think our finances are, are probably one of the greatest challenges that we have as a Napa School District, as a board today. I'm familiar with electric utility operations, so that includes operations budgets as well as capital budgets. How can we invest in capital to reduce, potentially reduce operations and so on? And with the declining enrollment that we'll have in the Napa School District, how do we continue to maintain our facilities and have, and offer high-quality education? And be able to purchase high-quality curriculum for our teachers to use in the classroom? Trying to make all that fit into a budget is difficult.
Thank you. You guys are making it easy on me. Mr. Swank, same question to you. What are the challenge, current challenges facing education and the school board in the Napa School District?
I think it's kind of like Ed said, I mean, we've all been talking about that. It's over the years, the, the enrollments, it's been declining. And I've seen that since I've been in the, back in, in Napa for 16 years. It's just been declining every year, and that's, that's definitely a challenge. Napa is growing, but the district isn't necessarily increasing in numbers. So I think that's the, I don't know if part of that is maybe, I don't know if it's the trust of the public, where parents are looking for different alternatives to public education. Sometimes that's the struggle, is the, the competition. I know the, it, it is a business. Education is a business. And I don't know that it's about making money, but it's certainly about staying afloat and being able to provide the best for, for our educators and for our students. You know, so that's that, you know, how do you meet those needs? How do you meet those challenges? I don't know. But certainly, certainly there is a priority to meet those demands for these students, that they, that they can be successful, that they can have the, the resources, the educators, well, the resources to help these students be successful in education. It's hard to have a magic ball and know what the future brings. But I think that's, that's probably one of the biggest challenges. It's kind of hard to say that everything revolves around money. It's, it is frustrating, but that is the truth. And I know we, we do the best we can with what we have to provide the best opportunities for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Benz, I think it's bound to over to you.
Okay. And I think we're back at the beginning of the rotation, too. And so this question comes with a caveat. So you, we'd like to understand your current feelings about this, but we understand that if you join the board, your opinions might change on this. But...
I just got that caveat, okay? It's brutally honest.
Yeah. Ms. Westfall noted earlier that there's been some, some turnover in seat three, right, in Zone, Zone 3. And so do you see yourself only fulfilling this term, which ends in December of this year? Or do you also plan to run as a trustee during the November election?
So, yeah. So my plan would be to run in November. I mean, I feel like this would be, you know, nine months of getting my feet wet, I think about nine months. And then just, just get ready and get going. I mean, that's my plan, is to, to, to start it and stay with it and, and move on for the next term.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Atienza, you heard the caveat. What say you? Do you plan to stick around until December, or do you also plan to run in November?
In my application materials, actually indicated that I, my plans were not to run. But I, after talking to some mentors, some neighbors, they actually shared with me and, and pointed out, there's a huge investment in, in train, in the training of our board members. And so if asked by the staff or, or, or my neighbors, others from Zone 3, I'd be, I'd entertain running.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Swank? Same question, same logic.
Thank you. That's a good question. I, I wasn't sure. Definitely, there was a vacancy, and I did want to step up and, and help fill that vacancy. I put some thought into it. I don't know for sure. That's a, that is a good question. I don't know. I'm definitely interested to see how, how it goes, and I want to believe I do have the time for it, I, the energy for it as well. And, but I don't concretely know. Never done it, so we'll see. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Ms. Westfall, same, same question.
Yeah. If you were to ask my partner Toby, he would say no. But I did tell him I wanted to serve and, and see. So I would say, I don't know, but my intentions were, you know, if, if things went well, that I would run for this seat.
Thank you.
Just had to finish a thought. Okay, I believe, Mr. Atienza, you're on to the next question, right?
Yes.
All right, just make sure. All right, the next question is, what are the leadership responsibilities of school board members?
Some of the responsibilities include being able to view both points of view. So there, whenever we're, we have a motion, whenever we have a request, we, we need to be able to evaluate both, both points of view and have adequate discussion, being prepared when we come to the meeting, having reviewed all the, the board materials that are given to us in advance, potentially even doing our own research and then talking with our community about whatever we're allowed to talk about in terms of getting our, our community or our zones' opinions on the topics. But being prepared is certainly being, that huge part of being the leadership, and then also being able to, to, without, without emotion, being able to logically decide on, evaluating the side on the topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Swank? What are the leadership responsibilities of school board members?
I would say to have an open mind, not have a, a personal agenda. To listen both sides of the, whatever is being presented, whether it's an argument or, or any thing that's presented for the board to consider and make a decision. I think it's to be open-minded and make the best possible decision that benefits as a whole, not as an individual. Gosh, I'd say work as a team member, be part of a team, and help each other out to be, to be successful as a team and not, and not look for personal accomplishments, I suppose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Westfall?
I would echo some of what, you know, their great candidates have said, and I would add responsibility, a leadership responsibility is civil discourse. As a board, you're setting a tone for the district that, that sends messages to kids, to families, to staff. And I also think it's a leadership responsibility to learn. We're a learning organization, and I would see the board as a learning board. What's good governance, what governance leads to improved student achievement. Those are some things I would add to the discussion.
Thank you. Ms. Behrens?
I mean, we've all said the same thing. I think we all agree, you know, we're listen, we're open-minded, we agree to disagree, we work as a team. I think we're, you know, it's our responsibility to take that communication back to the rest of our community, anything that we're able to talk about. But yeah, just keep an open mind and make the best decisions that we can as leaders for the, for the district and for this community.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, you're up. And what do you think is expected of you as a board member?
Oh, I would say, for one, it'd be, uh, I'm part of the community. Certainly be a, I think people would be looking, well, whether they're looking up to me or not, they're definitely watching me being a role model. I think it'd be no different being an educator. I thought it'd be no different being an educator. That's the thing, when I go to places, go to stores and see former students or current students, and they're always watching. And I think presenting myself in a way that represents the district and what the district's all about. And what is this, the school board, all about as well? You know, present ourselves in a way that is respected and honorable and within our community. And, yep.
Thank you. All right, again, no surprises here. What do you think is expected of you as a board member?
We've touched on a lot of things tonight, like being present at the board meetings, preparing on the board packet, civil discourse in meetings, listening to patrons, or ensuring that in our processes that our patrons are listened to and have opportunities to engage, ensuring that there's transparency in all that we do, and acting that way as well as a trustee. So that would be some of the things.
What do you think is expected of you as a board member?
I think we need to make sure that we're available. I mean, for the known meetings that we're aware, we need to make sure that we're always available. Try to be available for those that maybe are, for like special meetings. I think out in the community, we need to be listeners and be honest with each other. Yeah, just, I mean, you know, we are going to be in the community limelight. I mean, people are going to know that we're trustees, and they're going to try to bend our ear, but just listen to them, listen and communicate back to them. I mean, just kind of do what you guys do, do our job, so.
Okay. And what do you think is expected of you as a board member?
I thought of two words. That's one, be prepared. So part of my preparation for this was to actually go through all the board policy documents that were on the website, and then look at past videos, past meetings, past minutes. I think board needs to be coming to these meetings prepared with, having read all the materials, plus any additional research that may be required to make decisions. And also being engaged. So part of the policy documents include board members visiting each and every school within the school district, understand the facility needs, and to be engaged with the individual schools on an annual basis. And so based on my history on other committees and other boards, I feel I have been engaged, I've been engaged with programs, I've been engaged with staff as desired. And I hope to also be engaged elsewhere in the district, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excited to see the slide. It's going to be fine print.
Oh, before we ask the last question, I'm having trouble opening some of the attachments that you had sent. One of them.
The attachments on this topic?
Yeah.
There were no attachments.
Oh, never mind. I must be looking at them.
The board memo on the previous action item that was sent by Mr. Stomper today?
This was the 217 email.
If you want to ask the last question, all of us see what you have.
You can always reply.
I'm sorry, the email today?
No, 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 it's the, so I can see everybody's resumes and letters and everything, except for Ms. Barron's.
So I didn't send that today.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there's only one that won't open. Okay.
Okay, it's also in the board, I'll get it sent to you right now.
Okay, thank you.
Or just respond back to her and email.
And she can email it to you.
And then we can finish this last question.
Thank you, sorry.
Hit me with it, Tyler. I knew it was going to be fine print. Okay, question is, in a school board setting, there may be instances, sorry, where the board members have differing priorities and agendas. How would you work to align the board's collective goals and priorities to best serve the interest of the students and the community?
We work together. I would hope that we would have sessions where we could talk about things together and create those collective goals and priorities, and that we'd be confident enough and trust each other enough to call each other out, that we agreed on these priorities and goals, and where does this fit? And those types of civil conversation.
Thank you. Ms. Barron, same question to you.
So, you know, I've said before, I think we work as a team, and we all agree to disagree. Everybody's going to have a different opinion. And I think as we talk about stuff at the table, I take that back. Is this in a setting like this, or would this be like in a, because I know some things you wouldn't want to bring out. And is it like an executive session, or?
I think it can be viewed in both instances. Obviously, in a public setting, we get to deliberate here.
Sure.
But it also does similarly take place in executive sessions.
Okay, so I mean, I just think we need to be honest, and we listen to each other. And we go for the common good for the students and the teachers of our Nampa School District. We're not always, you know, you don't always agree on everything. I mean, even in your own home, you don't agree. I mean, it's just, but eventually you come to a decision that makes the best sense for the topic that you're discussing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Attanza, same question to you.
So I'm an engineer by heart, so my immediate reaction is always going to be depersonalize the problem, use logic to solve a problem, come up with alternate solutions. And I'm very happy to discuss pros and cons of all of the potential alternate solutions with the board. So, but when we as a board come up with a decision, my expectation for myself and the rest of the board is, even if I disagreed, even if I was in the opposition, a board needs to stand together with the decisions that we make as a board. I'd be happy to represent like the decision that we make collectively elsewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Swank, same question.
Okay. My thoughts with that is, it's certainly having an open mind. And I've always thought, and I often think, it's like, there is always the possibility that I'm wrong. And if there are differing opinions, you know, there could be a chance that I might be wrong. So I'd like to have that open mind, to listen and collaborate with the team, and be part of the solution, not part of the problem. When I was the president of a group here locally, my vice president, she always played the devil's advocate, and that made things hard. And, but with the rest of the team, having an open mind, it made things easier to work with one another. And so I like that, just have an open mind and be willing to admit to myself that I might not know the answer, and that my way might not be always the correct way. But working together, we can come to an agreement and to the best possible solution. Thank you.
Okay.
Did you resend it? Let me try.
We can't ask anymore, can we? Well, I tried, but you always say.
That one worked, thank you.
Yeah, I understand. Trustees, before we move on, is there any other questions that you would like to ask all of the applicants?
In order.
I know, I get it. This is what we do where I work, too. We have to, it has to be, it has to be fair. Any follow-up, or any question that you would like to? Okay, well, this is not an executive session. Therefore, we will deliberate in open meeting. It might be a little bit awkward to hear us talking about you as if you weren't sitting in front of us. If you want, you can leave the room if it's that bad. But that's the business that we're in. We're in the public business, and it is imperative that the public know what's going on. It's all that transparency that we talked about. So trustees, on that note, you're never going to get back on your computer by now.
I don't need it anywhere.
Sorry. What say you about the candidates?
I feel like we got four really good candidates. This is not an easy deliberation, because I felt like each of them brought something unique to the table. I truly feel like we have four people who applied for good reason, that support public education. So I actually find this to be the hardest appointment we've done so far.
Yeah, which is a good thing.
Yeah, it is.
That's it.
I'll say, from my standpoint, I didn't know what to expect either, just like most of you. This position is baptism by fire. It goes really, really quickly. You retain a lot of information, they feed it through a fire hose. One thing that I did lack the knowledge of is the amount of time that it takes to actually fulfill this position. That's something that I wanted to reiterate this day, that it is, for the pay we get, there's a lot of time spent.
It's free, by the way.
Yes. But it is important, because the purpose of the position is for the kids in this community. And so we obviously, we can all see past that, we enjoy doing it. You know, for me, my favorite times are going out to the schools, seeing the kids, doing the graduations, those sort of things, being the hands-on with the students themselves. Sometimes the position calls for a little tougher decisions. As you guys have seen in the last, even for my time here, in just 13 months, 14 months, it's been, there's been a lot of tough decisions. So I just want to make sure everyone is aware that there is a lot of time called for this job.
Trustee Benz, anything you'd like to?
No, I'd just like to second that, because on paper, well, I mean, I'd like to echo, I would like to echo that sentiment. It looks on paper like, oh, it's once a month, okay, whatever, we can do that. But there have been a lot of special meetings. There are a lot of incidentals and fires to put out that you don't anticipate, at least I didn't anticipate fully. And so it will be a bit of a commitment, but it sounds like all of you are willing to make that commitment, which is wonderful and flexible enough to do that. And I know that you said that you were interested in continuing past the end of the year. Again, it's okay if you change your mind once you get into it, but I'm glad that you have at least thought about what it looks like past that. And I really appreciate that all of you are willing to consider that once you know what you're getting into. That's very reassuring. Thank you for taking the time to consider filling this gap for us. This is a huge, huge thing. Yeah. I do actually have a question for all the candidates.
It's too late for that. Go ahead.
Do you want to go ahead and comment before I do the question?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, and then certainly we can have that question posed. I pulled out a few things here that really kind of struck out to me, some of the terms and things that I was looking for as a trustee. And from what I've learned, being baptized by fire and drinking from the fire hose is, you know, this is, it's a people business, and it's focused on the students. And you can't help but get emotional, because you're dealing with students. And you're dealing with students whose lives may hang in the balance. I mean, literally, from, in my other profession, it's unfortunate that I see some of those students who don't necessarily make it through what we want them to make it through, and then they, you know, are dealing with some consequences, and it's heartbreaking. But it's also very satisfying that you have, that you're in a position where you can truly affect change. It's not always going to be the right change, it may not always be the best change, and it certainly will never be agreed upon by everyone that that's the way we should go. So the terms that I was listening for and I heard from all of you are being prepared. You know, coming to the meetings, reading the board packet, asking questions to the district staff. That's one thing that I had to learn early on, is ask questions and get those answers, and then come to the board meeting with those questions, and be able to engage. Engage with your fellow trustees. We have not agreed on everything up here, and that's okay. And I think it's good for the public to see that. I think it's good for the public to see that. The relationship between the board and the superintendent is critical. And so I appreciate the responses, you know, as far as what is the leadership of the board and, you know, the day-to-day activities and things like that. At the end of the day, it's going to be that gentleman over there standing against the wall. He doesn't want anyone to know he's there. But the superintendent is the one that answers, well, I mean, ultimately, we answer, but he's running the day-to-day operations. And so having that good relationship with the superintendent is critical to a smooth and successful board. We will never agree on everything. The other thing that popped up that I was looking for was agree to disagree. Have that civil discourse. This is, this can, it can get emotional. And we can be sometimes a little too emotional. And so I, Mr., I almost called you Mr. Ed, I apologize. Mentioned depersonalize the issue, and even with disagreement, stand together. And that was something that we learned right off the bat. I think early on in our first year, we disagreed on some things, but we supported as a board the decision that was made. And one clear example, I disagreed with going to a four-day student contact week. I voted against that. But I support the decision of the board, and I support what the district is doing. And I was wrong. I actually think it's turning into a good thing. But that's what I've learned very quickly, is that you can disagree, but you do have to support the decision of the board. Couple other things, if I can grab them real quick. Be prepared, listening, be present at meetings. When you work in the public arena, you have to be present at the meeting that you're at. You know, it's not texting or doing other work, or on the phone, or you're present at the meeting. And there's a lot of legal issues that come along with that, and so on and so forth. But that really is showing respect to the people that are here, to the people that are watching. It really is being present. And getting out into the schools, I think every one of you kind of mentioned that, that's the fun job. It really is. I wish I had more time to do that. I wish we all had more time to do that. So get out into those schools as much as possible. And being at the graduations is always a highlight, because you see the success that those kids have done and worked hard for. That, I love it. I will move heaven and earth to make sure that we're at graduations. I was glad that you mentioned, all of you mentioned, at some point, the financials. Yeah, unfortunately, sometimes our hands are tied as a board because of the funding and how that's all set up. And that's time for a whole, there's a whole different time for that discussion. But that is something that we are always, always have our eye on, is the financials. We have to be good stewards of public money. And even though we may not always agree, that really is, how do we spend those precious, precious tax dollars for the benefit of the students in the district? And sometimes those aren't popular decisions that are made either. Anyways, I could go on and on, but trustee Taylor, do you want to ask you a question?
Yeah, I do.
Of all candidates?
I do, and we'll just start here and go forward, and then have you pop up and just a quick answer. In the last, I would say, in the last three years, we've made a lot of decisions. Have you had an opportunity to review possibly, I'd say, maybe the last six months of meetings?
Did you get that, Tyler?
I actually.
It's always on.
Yeah, I didn't think you sounded as loud, though.
So I've looked at the last couple of months.
Just because I wanted to see what the time constraints were. You know, I didn't see anything alarming in any of that, so I didn't go back six months, but I did go probably back to about October and noticed that there were several special meetings. A lot of it had to do with students. And there, you know, whether they were able to stay in school or not. I mean, I think you were trying to make decisions. I mean, I think you were trying to make decisions. I, I don't know what the students had done because I wasn't here, but I, I think it was whether they were able to continue on through graduation.
Our special meetings, I get what you're talking about.
Yes, yes, thank you, sorry.
Nope, totally.
Because there were meetings, yeah, there were several meetings, yeah. So, I took a, I took a, probably a harder look at the special meetings, just knowing that, because I wanted to make sure that I did have the time. And before I actually applied. And so, that's what I looked at more so in the last three or four months, just your, all your special meetings.
Great, thank you.
I actually started with reviewing the minutes from previous meetings. So, probably from about August or so until now. And then I'd gone back through and reviewed the videos off of the YouTube, the, the stream. So, from about August on, I think I may have played them a little fast, so about 1.5 or time speed. But yeah, got through about half of those. I think the, the transportation meeting at the beginning of the, the school year, that was certainly.
Must-see TV.
That was, that was an interesting meeting, so.
You wanted to get us a TV reality show.
So, I think, I think several of the meetings, I think, were very emotional, especially when we talk about closing schools. Transportation has been a big deal this year and that's, that was a difficult meeting at the beginning of the year and continues to come up. I think a really interesting topic of the last regular meeting was the house bill associated with some, some money and then loss of maintenance money versus gaining some capital funds. So, that was really intriguing for me because from a sales point of view, I talk about that. How do you invest capital to reduce operating expenses? I, I look at that, I analyze that with my customers, all customers all the time. So, yes.
Thank you. Now, the question's interesting. It says, have you had the opportunity? I would say, yes, I've had the opportunity, but no, I did not. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have watched some of the, some of the meetings, not all, certainly have followed the changes. You read about them in the media, your, your social media. I have family that are still enrolled here in the district, so they often ask me questions as well. And I'm excited that they're involved and engaged. So, yes and no?
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, trustees, any other questions you would like to pose to candidates?
No.
Okay, let's open it up for discussion then. Let's just attack the elephant in the room.
And then are we to, are we supposed to fill out this and pass it back or?
Yeah.
For discussion.
I was going to say, we want to just go to the action item portion of our agenda. That's where you'll do your discussion and possible appointment. I guess that one of the things is, I believe we were more discussed using the ballot. If they, so to select one and sign it and then I would gather it. And then I would read out the ballots.
So, we can, so.
Do it that way.
We'll go to, we'll go to actions item or agenda item number five, which is Zone Three trustee appointment. Item number four was candidate interviews. So, I'm trying to think of how. Do we need to dis, do you want to discuss, trustees, do you want to discuss? I know, I'm just, I'm kind of going outside the lines here.
What did we do last time?
Want to discuss the candidates and their responses and then vote? Or do you want to vote on the secret ballot or?
Well, it's not a secret.
Well, I mean, it's not secret, but it's.
This is me being mean again.
Chair Kirkman, point of clarification.
Yeah.
Um, clerk Lamont, are we supposed to rank them? Is this a ranked?
Um, it was actually, so the last two times you did not rank them, you just selected. And so, the last time, two of them had, were tied, so we brought those two back to the table.
Okay.
But you can rank.
Let's, let's rank them. And the reason I say that is because we only have four trustees here. So, if it doesn't, that's.
Of course.
I know, but, but what I'm saying, if it ends up in a tie, then if there's two candidates, then we could bring those two back. Would it matter if we rank them or not?
But you just have to be clear what the ranking means. Are you doing number one as your top candidate? Are you doing whoever, the totals are the, whoever totals, it's like golf, the lowest score wins. I mean, I'm not trying to be like.
No, let's, let's just go straight. Trustee Bins.
Yeah, well, if we look, if we look at the, the actual thing, it has motion to appoint person.
Well, we have to do that no matter what, even if you do the ballot.
Right, but where I'm going is if we have a discussion and we kind of reach a consensus, then we could just make a motion with that person's name in it versus trying to, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, thank you. That's kind of where I was going. Do you want to have that discussion here or do you want to just vote?
Oh, I see what your question is now. So, you're asking, do we want to talk about it and come up with the answer together or are we ready to vote?
Or you want to just vote? Thanks, thanks for the interpretation.
I, I know the ranking sounds great. This forum was based off the last two times you did it. So, it's really based off, yes. And I would recommend moving that because it, on, on the ballot, it also says select one. That way, when it, because they will be public record, plus I'll put those in a minute. So, if you use those, let's keep it the way it's already formatted.
Okay.
Okay. When one, after we give you our ballots.
If you use the ballot.
We're going to use the ballots.
Oh, you are.
We're going to use the ballots, select the individual.
Did we just decide that?
Yeah, I guess.
Got it. Jeff, just let us know.
Someone needs to make a decision, so we'll just.
We talked about it, he's like, we're going to use the ballot. That was way too long. I was like, what?
So, essentially, we will all place our ballot, give it to Ms. Lamont.
Well, but does any, does anybody need to have any discussion?
Yeah, that's, I'd still want to make sure if anyone wants to discuss the candidates, you certainly can. We can, we can do both. No?
Well, I think, I think it's, it's a very difficult decision because we do have very, four very qualified people here in front of us.
It's a hard decision.
That is. Um, so my, my main question, trustee, is the one that really came for me, that intrigued me was just somebody who maybe wants to continue after their service. And I only say this because I do believe that it's important that we have longevity in the board. And we're bringing somebody in, you know, towards the end of a term. So, I did think it would be nice to have somebody who had some foundation and then some energy to rerun. But I also think it's a very fair thing, a very fair thing to say the answer would be maybe because it is like baptism by fire.
Let me see how it goes.
Yeah, and if I had watched the videos the last year, I might not have applied myself. So, it's one of those things where I think that's a catch-22. But I, I was excited to see that they were all open to it. But we had one candidate who, who obviously was like, I feel like, yeah, that's what I want to do. And then another who was more open to it after considering what the community would want from them. And I think that's important as well. So, just throwing that out there, food for thought.
Yeah, well, along that same line, I, I appreciate candidates who, who are prepared. And again, everyone kind of brought that up in their answers throughout these questions. But coming to meetings and seeing how the meetings are run and seeing what kind of interaction the board has with maybe the superintendent. I mean, all those, all those mechanics of a board meeting and how the board operates, I think is very important. So, so seeing candidates who show up to the meetings to see that, who do their homework and find out what, what these issues have been in the district, what we, what have we been dealing with? And, and maybe kind of looking into the future, like what are we going to be dealing with? And, and, you know, what is our budget? How much is the Nampa School District budget? And how much are we budgeting for this? And how much are we budgeting for that? And, you know, what's the potential of, you know, all that? I, I really appreciate the candidates who do their homework, who watch the meetings, who, you know, just kind of get all that information and then come prepared. I, I really appreciate that, that's all I got. I say that now, but I've probably got more. Anything, trustee Bins, you want to add?
No, just a quick point of clarification. Did you say this, this fall that you'd been on this board before? Thank you. She served previously. Yeah, she was a Zone Three previous trustee prior to Tracy Person. Okay, awesome, thank you.
Trustee Jennings, anything you want to add? Before we mark this ballot, sign it and give it to clerk Lamont.
Yeah, I, I think I probably almost had the shortest term because I almost wanted to quit before I was even sworn in. So, time, the time thing is, was my, was my big priority. And all of you have obviously said that you've made concessions for this, for this board, for this position. And it's one of those things that I, I've been telling everyone, I got to reiterate, it is very, very time-consuming, so.
All right, with that, please mark your ballot, select one, sign it. And then clerk Lamont, if you want to grab these. Does the appointment have, has to be made by motion? They each get one vote.
You understand it after you looked at it because I colored the whole thing. It was like a gorgeous portrait.
Okay.
Did we do like one?
No, I'm just thinking, I have one handwriting. Chair Taylor. Oh, sorry, Chair Kirkman cast a vote for Ed. And I'm going to just say first names, so I don't butcher. Chair Ben, trustee Bins casted a vote for Carla. Trustee Jennings voted, casted a vote for Carla. And trustee Taylor votes, casted her vote for Carla as well.
Right. Well. Looks like Carla's got the most votes. See, it didn't take us six months to tally up the votes. All right. I know, that was a dig to the federal system.
They're still counting, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still working on theirs. All right, Carla Behrens, I will entertain a motion.
I move to, I move to appoint Carla, Carla Behrens, is that right? To the vacant seat for Zone Three. I second that.
All right, motion then seconded, all in favor? All right. Any opposed? All right, Carla, you are the new Zone Two trustee.
You guys, there was not a bad choice here for us. Not one. This was a very difficult choice and I honestly didn't know what I would choose until we got here tonight because you were all very qualified. And we were very blessed that you guys all threw your hat to be here.
And thank you for the detailed application.
Yeah. It was beyond, this whole thing was beyond. We're honored that you all applied, truly.
So, we will swear you in and you'll take your seat at the next regular board meeting, which is the next week.
Yes.
Is it Tuesday or Monday?
Tuesday. I just, I was trying to type out the motion because you added it. It's a little different than the recommended motion in there.
All right.
Um, who seconded it?
I did.
Thank you.
All right, so from now until Tuesday, we expect you to be here on Tuesday. We don't want anyone else trying to talk you out of this over the next week or so.
And Dr. Russell and clerk Lamont will get with you to start getting you set up for your email.
Yeah, you'll get all that.
You'll get baptized by fire. It happens pretty quick.
And if you have, if you have any questions, I mean, you can certainly reach out to me, to vice chair Jennings, any of us on the board, really, if you have any questions on what ifs, what's going to happen? Are you sure I want to do this? Anyways.
I appreciate that.
But actually clerk Lamont can actually give you, I, I don't, mind you, Kristy, if you give her my cell number, if she wants to text or reach out. I'm not going to speak with the other trustees, though. Okay, is there anything else? Nope. All right, then this meeting is adjourned.